Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Bun.
Here.
All right. We have a quorum this evening. All right, move on. We have a public participation. The first item is public comment. It's a two-minute opportunity that any member of the public that's not on the agenda can speak to the board on any topic. There are plenty of people, so if anybody had anything on their mind, now is the opportunity. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. To item B, we have Linda Pacetti Olsen regarding a temporary liquor license request.
Hello? Is that on? Thank you. My name is Linda Pacetti Olsen. I live at 2239 Brentwood Avenue here in Montgomery. I'm asking the Village of Montgomery for permission to serve wine at a fundraiser held at Riverview Diner, 140 South River Street in Montgomery. A limited amount of wine will be available, not sold, to my guests along with their appetizers. This event is scheduled for September 7, 2016, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM in the private area of the restaurant, with 50 to 75 invited guests expected to attend. There will be a BACIT-approved person onsite to check IDs for legal age, to serve, and to determine if wine service needs to be refused to anyone present. That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And I'd ask our attorney, just to summarize, I know that staff had received your request previously and are prepared, just to surface level respond.
Sure. So, at present, I don't believe that the request can be granted as our ordinances currently stand. That's not to say that the board can't choose to change that, but right now, the way the rules are set up for the Liquor Commission for Temporary Liquor Licenses is it would have to be for a not-for-profit, club, society, fraternal, or benevolent organization. I don't think it qualifies as any of those. And unfortunately, even if you're not selling the liquor, we have a BYOB prohibition ordinance in the Village of Montgomery, so you can't bring wine to a restaurant at present either. Now, having said that, just understand, it's the board's discretion. If you want to choose one, either or both of those, and say, "We want to change it to make this possible," that can be done. There are no public hearings required with it, so it's fairly fast-acting, but that's a policy decision. That's for the board to decide. But at present, the way things are written, I don't think that the village staff can grant that request.
What were the categories, again, that fall under the...
Not-for-profit, club, society, fraternal, or benev... pardon me, benevolent organization. What you might generically categorize as the do-gooder stuff.
Do you need to be a registered 501 to be considered in that category?
Originally, I had thought that that was the case, but actually, the way our ordinance reads it simply states not nonprofit. So, I think if you were registered with the Secretary of State as a nonprofit, there is such a category. I think that arguably fits, as long as it's a club, society, fraternal, or benevolent, which I can't say, organization.
Previously, I think when we discussed the BYOB, because we had some lengthy discussions about this, wasn't the insurance an issue with the BYOB? Because you or I going in there ringing a bottle of wine in for dinner, we don't have insurance. We don't have dram shop insurance, and Leno doesn't want to carry it.
Well, ultimately, I don't recall that discussion fully. I apologize for that. It's been a few years, I think, but probably insurance was a part of the discussion, and I think that reasonable minds could come down on either side of that issue. But again, that's policy, so I'll leave that.
Is a political activity certainly not a profitable activity?
Let me tell you.
Please put that in the paper.
I'm wondering about expanding that iteration of eligible activities to include... because politics is at the heart of our democracy, really, and I think it's to our village's advantage to have political activity here and people to have a chance to meet aspiring candidates.
And that's the policy decision for you all to decide.
And if I remember right, it was less than a year ago, when a person came from over there before and wanted a BYO, and our whole thing was, fine, let the restaurant carry the damn dram shop so that we don't get sued, and he wouldn't do it. So, and I understand he may not know there is a beer and wine license, which I thought we conveyed to him, but that would be the easiest, cheapest way to do it. And rather than bring your own wine, you could buy a cheap beer or wine, a lot cheaper than bringing it yourself and getting caught within a car, I would think so. But we have turned many people down, and it seems like a lot of them have been at that restaurant, because he's got a nice area, but he just won't budge on it, I think. And I keep reminding him that the money's in the liquor, more than the food, but he sells a lot of food. There's no doubt about that.
Well, and the reality, too, is if any one of these organizations wants to hold a one-day event and provide their own insurance, that the village requires currently for our to get a temporary liquor license, the cost of that would probably make selling the beer and wine for profit cost prohibitive, is what I've figured out. So, the reality is, I actually don't mind having this conversation with the BYOB aspect of it. I was talking with staff about that today. The reality is, today is August 22nd. We don't have another village board meeting before, you know, the fundraiser is set, so there wouldn't, outside of calling for a special meeting, if there was a majority of the board that wanted to do that, we wouldn't have an opportunity to approve that kind of change to ordinance between now and that date. But if you guys feel otherwise, or if we want to have more conversations about certain aspects of this, so it sounds like we could modify the temporary requirement so that political organizations could get a temporary liquor license, and they would have to, currently as it's written, show us that you have insurance to cover for that.
All the normal conditions under any temporary liquor license.
Or we could revisit the bring-your-own-beer ordinance, you know, and talk about that again.
If we were to grant the liquor license, would you have a problem with the insurance costs?
No, I wouldn't. He said he could add it on to his restaurant insurance for a small amount, for one night.
Okay. As far as I'm not, I agree with Matt, and I agree with Stan. As far as I think that the conversation needs to happen, we need to probably include political organizations. If we need to do a special meeting, I'm fine with that as well. Just, that's fine. It's really dependent upon what the other trustees think.
I wouldn't mind a special meeting either, but I would like to talk to the restaurant and say, "Here's your choice, too. You might want to get a beer and wine license." There's enough people, we've turned a lot of people down over there, and it's always been BYO, but even with insurance for one day, guess what? We're still the deep pockets, and it's just changing our, you know...
Yeah. My only concern, or main first concern, would be is that we move too quickly on a policy change that's been in place, and that's not to say it shouldn't be revisited, just that we need to think it through, because we can't change the ordinance because Riverview has this room and we want to do that. Well, you have to think about, everybody else, then, would be entitled to these changes as well, so.
In fact, that same person said, "Well, forget the restaurant. I'll have it in a warehouse somewhere in Montgomery," if you remember. And that even gets more complicated, and you don't know where one of these is going to pop up.
Well, the sad outcome would be for that business to drift into Aurora, or Oswego, or Yorkville, because we couldn't accommodate it. And I think we want that affinity between candidates and the voters. It serves us well. We, I think we're entitled to have a special meeting even by telephone, aren't we?
You have a provision where if you have a majority here, and you have one or two people unavailable, you could do that, but you'd still have to have a majority here physically in the room.
Present circumstance notwithstanding, it doesn't seem like a bad idea to me at all, and if other venues are eligible for it, then I would say, "Fine." There's no focus on one facility here. It's just, do we want to allow that activity or not?
I'd want to talk about it a little more at that meeting, and we still have to post it for 48 hours before. But I'm not, you know, I don't know if I'm ready to talk about it tonight. I'd like to see what his comment would be at the restaurant, but, and I'm not for BYO in any place you want to have a political party or anything like that. I just, because that's, once people started talking like that, it was like, whoa, wait a minute, you could have it in your garage? Yeah.
That's not what's on the table. We're talking about approved distribution of, under BACIT-trained conditions. BYOB is not what we're talking about.
Right. Yeah, for clarification purposes, I'm not considering BYOB, because as I understand it, even if the ordinance were changed to include political organizations, they would still have to come before the board, and we'd have to grant the liquor license, correct?
Temporary licenses don't have to come before the board, but what we would need to bring before the board is a change to the ordinance to fit another category, political entities, into the temporary liquor license, and then they could be issued by the Liquor Commissioner, so.
Then my concern there is, okay, me and five of my high school buddies or my college buddies decide, "We're going to have a keg in the middle of, somewhere," and someone comes up to us and we say, "Oh, yeah, we're all, this is a political organization."
Ohio State guys would try that, probably, but...
Absolutely.
Wisconsin one, but go ahead.
One way that that could be dealt with, Linda, do you have a D1 filing with the State Board of Elections?
Not at the, a D1?
Yeah. Have you created a political committee?
I haven't created a political committee, but I would do that before I had a fundraiser.
So, that's a way that you could deal with that, is to add that qualification, and that there has to be a D1 filing onboard with the State Board of Elections, and then your five buddies are out of luck.
You could certify that you're a candidate, too. That's a legal status to be a candidate on the ballot.
And have the, obviously, the building owner's approval, because the liquor license would be issued to the entity and not so much the owner of that property.
Right. You'd need the consent of whoever.
So, I mean, there seems to be some ways where we can...
And proof of insurance.
That's already a part of this.
Okay.
What was the date of the event?
September 7th.
All right. Well, it seems like something that the board is willing to entertain. I can promise you that we will try and set a meeting before then, and we'll let you know relatively quickly if we can't get one set for, let's say, next week. It's a discussion that the board, I think, needs to have with a draft ordinance, that we can mark up and approve or, you know, or table that night. So, we'll try and see if we can get a special board meeting set up to discuss this in the next week or two.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
All right, moving on, we have the fun, not that that wasn't fun, the fun part of the meeting. I like talking policy, so. The recognition of the Montgomery Fest volunteers. With that, I'll ask the Fest Chairman, Denny Lee, to summarize.
You want to hand these out?
Yeah.
We had a good fest, one of the best parades. We had four bands from Keanlin, Sandwich, East Aurora, and Proviso West. So, the parade was real well. The car show didn't have big numbers, but the cars that were there were real nice. The carnival, we solved some problems there, and people were happy with that. The craft booths, there was 89 of them, I think it was, so we had a good fest. I do appreciate, and I know we don't have them here to recognize them, but our workers did a heck of a job, a lot of them, the girls in the office. Renee even worked the craft booth, the craft area with Teresa. Todd and all his guys spent a lot of hours getting fences up and getting it straightened out with the carnival. And the police department, we had better police protection. I think a lot of people mentioned that, that there was a lot of police presence, and it worked out real well. And being so close to Aurora, we want to make sure that we have a good fest, so. Other than that...
And is anybody here a tree winner? I know the names went out, but we raffled off some trees for your parkway. Anybody here win that? So, we, yeah, we have, we raffled off, it was a free raffle, four or five trees, four trees from Public Works, the ones that were sitting next to the village tent, so. People seem to enjoy that.
We have tree huggers, but no tree people winners. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so we'll go with the parade and carnival, hand stamping. We have Sammy Marisak and Kylie Zhang. And then Brian, yeah.
These two are always together. You can't find one without the other.
And for those of you that don't remember, Sammy came to our board meeting, how many years ago?
Three.
To request the history tour. So, he was the youngest person we had addressed the board at, as far as I've, as long as I've been here, so. And then craft booths and the parade, Brian, Brian Marisak?
Brian. Brian helped with everything, including his golf carts, and those two, Sammy and Brian, are kids of our trustee Doug Marisak. Put his kids to work.
All right. And now we have plenty of parade volunteers, so what maybe I'll do for these is, I'll read off the names. If you're here, you can come down, and I'll hand them all out. Unless you all want your own standing ovation, we can do that. Mike Hammond here? Mike Hammond? Yeah, there he is. Okay. And we have Darcy Hammond, and Kyle Hammond, and Ryan Hammond, and Joe Yen, I saw Joe, and Amelie Yen, Sarah Bragg, Eric Bragg, Kristen Bragg, Lou Dotomo, and Louis Dotomo. All right, thank you.
Mike is the chairman of our planning commission. Joe and his daughter has helped for years, and the Ryan boys now are bigger than Dad. Eric Bragg is getting bigger than Mom, and he's always helped, too, in the parade. Jason wasn't here. He was off with his Homeland Security gig. And Lou and his son live near the Braggs. Lou is a Cortland policeman, and his boy did a super job on security for his age. We all thought he was older, but he did a great job.
All right, the next category we have is Settler's Cottage and the Car Show. We have Jeanne Lee. There she is.
My dear wife is very happy when this is over.
And Kelly Lee?
Kelly's not here.
And, yeah. Does anybody, I'm sure you guys, Steve?
Our, that's my new son-in-law, and he's not here either.
All right. And we'll call up the car show people, so we can get a nice picture. Gretchen Countryman?
Gretchen just got back from Dominican Republic, in order to work for the show.
Jennifer Regal Bermudas?
I don't think she's here.
Sharon Preakle?
She's not here either.
Sue Essig?
And she didn't come either.
All right, car show judges. We have Dan Ditman?
Dan's been our head judge for the, I don't know how many years lately, and he's the one that gets here at 6 o'clock before I do.
All right, we have Matthew Galbraith.
Matt's not here, but Dan will take his, because he works with him.
David Buchanan?
And that's Debbie's husband.
Chris Schatz?
Chris is not here either. Give those two to Debbie.
Joe Torrance?
Joe's not here.
Bill Shank?
He's not here either. Bill had a $73,000 car sitting there on the judges, and he got second place by one vote. So, you know how good the first car was, just in the judges' car alone, and we're just glad to have some good qualified judges, Joe and Bill added.
Marvin King?
Marvin's our oldest, I shouldn't say oldest judge, should I mean? I mean, the oldest term judge that we've had.
Barry Crowell?
No.
And Ed Perez?
No, he's not here either, so.
All right. I think, is that all the car show? Yep. Thank you. All right, more carnival hand stamping. Colton Lee?
He's not. He's working Elburn cleanup.
And Caleb Thompson?
He's football practice.
We have bike corral, fishing derby, and cleanup. Steve Weddle? How do you say that?
I don't think he's here either. Boy Scout troop does the, has the carp show for us. We are the longest-running carp show in the United States, we are told by the Carp Association, which is hard to believe, but we are. It's been over 30 years, and we are the longest, and they recognize us on that. I didn't even know there was a national association, but...
We have craft booths now. Scott Neal?
He's not here. I actually don't see any of my people here.
How do you pronounce that name?
Gray Dee.
Gray Dee.
Gray Dee Constable. It's Jenna's husband.
Awesome. And then Terry Anderson?
Yeah, he couldn't make it tonight. And I'd also like to recognize Jenna, and Debbie also helps out quite a bit with the, particularly with the breakdown and the setup, so I really appreciate that.
That's a lot of words.
Yeah.
All right, now we have Community Christian Church, the Family Tent Church Service. And then we have Channing Gutierrez?
They have done our church service.
Everybody? And we have John Reimheimer, Jennifer Baumgartner, Jordan Baumgartner, and Dan Litwiler. Awesome. Thank you. Thank all of them.
We have a good crowd for the service, because she brings her whole church, which is nice, but they do a very great job. We're happy to have them every year.
We have Settler's Cottage and walking tour. John Amon?
John's not here. And the next two are Jean and Joan Michaels from the Old Michaels store, and they couldn't make it tonight either.
All right, and last but not least, we have the Public Works. Larry Essig?
Larry's helped us for probably at least 20 years, I would say.
Tim Recker?
Tim's not here.
Ricky?
But his brother is. Those two have helped us for many years, too.
That's it for then? Thank you. So, that's the official handout, you know, presentations that we have, but like always, the Police Department, Public Works Department, all the staff from Village Hall that spends, you know, thousands of hours putting the fest together every year for the last 30 years. Certainly appreciate that, and everybody on the board that spent, you know, lives down at the fest, just like our staff, for three or four days straight, so. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to say, I want to thank all the trustees for helping, especially Doug Marisak, who kind of took some of my roles, and he was down here till 1:30 Sunday night and cleaned up to the food vendors' last, and that was usually my job, so I gave it to him, and he did a fine job.
I just want to share one quick story, because Mr. Lee has done this for years and done a fantastic job. My daughter and I showed up down here at the park at 7:00 on Friday morning, and I saw the funniest thing I've ever seen, Denny Lee with his Gatorade bottle, his pipe, and an umbrella, sitting at a picnic table in the middle of the park in the pouring rain. I really wish I had taken my phone out and gotten a picture of this. It was a picturesque moment. He was there. But again, thanks to Denny for everything that he does for this fest, so.
Would like to thank everybody for coming. You can certainly stay for the whole meeting, but you don't have to, and we won't be offended if you leave.
We should rethink telling them that, you know?
I know.
Well, I have to be honest. When I was sworn in, my last time, I told my parents that there's always a pause and they get to leave, and you didn't pause, and I hear about it continually as they sat through the hour and a half meeting. Remember that.
All right, so I'll move on with the consent, and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of August 8th, executive session minutes of August 8th, accounts payable through August 4th, accounts receivable report for July of 2016, appointment of beautification committee members, ordinance 1735, that's the Old Dominion annexation, that's the second reading, we put that in consent last time, and then ordinance 1736, which is amending section four of the village zoning ordinance regarding chain-link fences, second reading.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bun?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Moving on, items for separate action. We have several of, well, four very similar SSA, well, we have amending and establishing. So, do you want to give an intro to all of these, and then we'll vote on them all independently?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item that is a follow-up to public hearing that was held in June, which establishes the backup or dormant SSAs for these four newly-developed properties. Action is needed on each one individually, so we'd ask that you approve these four ordinances tonight.
All right. So, if you recall, we had the public hearings, and nobody spoke on any of these, not that that's either here nor there, just to note.
I have a quick question on all four, if I may, and I always ask this question, but the values in these special service areas are zero unless there's some sort of issue?
That's correct.
Okay.
We used to call them backup SSAs, or is this different from that?
We have called them backup SSAs. We call them dormant SSAs. It's essentially the same thing.
It is, and legally, there's no difference. It's just how you draft them and how we operate them.
Could we move to approve them all at once, individually?
He's going to say no, yeah. So, item A, ordinance 1737?
I move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Bun?
Aye.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Item B, ordinance 1738?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bun?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Ordinance 1739?
So moved.
Try to see how fast you can write.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Ordinance 1740?
I have a question on this. This was one that we established, and then we revoked it, or we did something where we reversed it. Does that sound right?
Michaels.
On Michaels?
I don't recall.
There was a wording issue, if I under, if I remember correctly.
I believe that there was a publication issue earlier in the year, so we had to republish, redo the public hearing, so it was a matter of just making sure all the ducks were in a row.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we have items for discussion, liquor license request from Niners Grill, and I'll ask the chief for a summary.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Martin Snell, general manager of Niners Grill. As you know, in the next 30 to 45 days, possibly 60 days, Niners will be opening. They're requesting a Class F, beer and wine-only liquor license. That cost is $1,000 a year. If you have any questions of Martin, Martin's been in the restaurant business before, he'd gladly answer any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Martin, appreciate it. Any questions for Martin?
When are you going to open?
That's a good question, I need to know the answer to that as well. We're actually really shooting to open in September, but that, too, is still kind of, to be determined, unfortunately, there's a, there's been a couple setbacks, and hopefully we'll get open sooner than later.
All right, I do get that question quite frequently, I, people are excited about it, and they've been watching the construction of it.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we see people driving around every day, so we, we're definitely confident that we have a great location, and that Montgomery will be a great place for us to, to start really making a name up here for ourselves.
All right.
Have we be, have we begun this process at all? Is, is this the first?
This is, yeah, this is the first step.
Okay.
So I don't recall the exact liquor license that was at that location previously, but it was more than beer and wine.
Yes, they had, they had a full bar in there, and we've since removed that, that full bar. We're not looking to, to serve, you know, a, a full line of drinks, really, we're, we're very family-oriented, you know, our, our hours are going to be from nine to six, or, I'm sorry, from six to nine, and really just looking to be able to serve, you know, a beer with a, with a hamburger, or a nice Merlot with a, with a steak, nothing more than that.
Okay, six in the evening, or six in the morning?
No, six in the morning till nine in the evening, yes. Sorry.
See, that was a pretty tight window. You're going to lose the early birds.
Yeah, I think Fridays and Saturdays, I think we're planning on, on open till 10, but, you know, a lot of families don't really stay out that much later, so, like I said, we're very family-oriented, and that's really what we're shooting for.
Okay, right. I'm not hearing any objection from the board, you know, liquor license at this location before, it seems to make sense in this, in this situation, so we can proceed accordingly, all right?
Great, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to Montgomery.
Thanks, chief. All right, moving on, we have the quarterly financial report.
Thank you, President Brody. Fiscal year '17, financial and cash investments for the first quarter are in your packets. Since we're only three months through the fiscal year, there's only a couple items that I want to point out. First is state sales tax, which is on page one of the report, and non-home rule sales taxes, which is on page four of the report, continue to come in above estimates or consistently higher than that same timeframe from last year. And then on pages six and seven of the report, it shows the cash and investments held by the village. If there are any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Just to comment, if I will, I appreciate the fact that we get our sales tax information in our weekly reports, so it's very useful.
I thought you were going to say, I appreciate that we get our sales tax, which I think you're also very.
I appreciate we get our sales tax as well.
Very thankful for. Anybody have any other questions, or is there anything else you're thankful for? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to, and thank you, move on to newer and finished business? Not going to give you too much time here. All right, hearing none?
I have one personal item to add related to the tree auction. Neighbors of ours won one of the trees, and the mother and wife of this family passed away. They had planned to have a tree planted before her health failed, and were delighted to win this tree, and they planned to put it exactly where they had talked about putting it, so they were very happy to win it.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right, moving on, you can see we have future board meetings. The next village board meeting, outside of a special board meeting, if we can get one scheduled, would be Monday, September 12th. And with that, we don't have executive session. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
I wore my green and gold, I didn't say anything. Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Are we out of here?